Hi, everyone, and welcome. This is Denton Matters Municipal Candidate Forum. We have with us today George Ferry, who is running for District One. And my name is Tamsin Price. We've got Matt Punetta also from Denton Matters that are going to be asking questions. So just to get into a little bit of the details on voting. Voting, early voting starts on October 13th, which is Tuesday. And then Election Day is going to be November 3rd. Municipal races are going to be at the very bottom of your ballot. So please, please, please go all the way down and vote for your candidates. So we're gonna go ahead and ask George to tell us a little bit about himself and why he's decided he's running.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. My name is George Ferry, and I have lived in Denton for the better part of 15 years. Recently closed my business, but was a business owner here, owned Wine Squared, been a renter all 15 of those years. I'm running because I want to see a more diverse table to sit on council. You know, we're supposed to have leaders that represent all of Denton, and I don't feel like that's true right now. I'd like to see a renter on council to really give better perspective about what safe and affordable housing really looks like. You know, as a queer person, I'd like to see someone on council who represents the LGBTQ+ community on our needs and our safety and our concerns about equality. I'm running because I want to be able to continue my, my heart of service and, you know, do the work and continue to do the work for my community at large, the city of Denton specifically, District One where I live and where I've lived since 2011. You know, I'm, I, my hope is that I can be of good use and I want to be put to work. And I hope that you all get out and vote.
Um, so there's kind of a history, and hopefully I don't jinx it by bringing this up. But on council right now, we have two city council members. You know, Paul Meltzer, who ran, you know, who ran and lost by a very famous 52 votes, if you ask him. Deb Arminter ran and lost, and then she came back. Both of them came back in the second time they ran and won. You, okay, you ran last time, yeah, hopefully it doesn't trick us. You ran for D1 last time against, against Gerard Huthsbyth, who's running for mayor this time. It was a pretty close race, I think it was like, like 100 votes.
98.
98. They always remember the number.
You don't forget.
So the question on this one is, you know, in a lot of ways, it's almost like you've been running for two years, right? What were the lessons that you took from that first run? And, you know, how has that affected basically your campaign and, you know, your outlook on serving going into this?
Good question. You know, everyone learns a whole bunch from their first run, like where money could have been better spent, where you, where your time could have better been used, who you should have spoken to that maybe you didn't get a chance to get around to the first go-round. You know, I, for me, my biggest thing is I, I don't want to play games. You know, I, politics is such a game sometimes, you know? I said it on Saturday's forum, you know, my candidate's taking PAC money. I don't, I'm not, I'm not here for special interest groups. I'm not here to put on some suit and tie and put on some facade. I'm an everyday working person who is struggling to make ends meet paycheck to paycheck. This is who I am. I want to represent myself every day who I am. I wear t-shirts, you know, sometimes my hair is disheveled, haven't gotten a haircut in forever because of COVID. You know, I'm, I'm comfortable just being me, but also being educated and on top of the issues of what's going on in our city right now. And being unafraid to be super educated on what's going on and to talk about it in real ways. It's not large legal jargon and ordinances, just in real everyday ways that we can come to terms with what's happening, why it's taking so long, or what we need to happen and how we go about doing it.
Thank you. So we are, you did mention COVID, and we are in a little bit of a unusual year. Because of COVID, the elections had to be pushed back from May to now November. So had everything been normal, you could have possibly already been in this seat for six months at this point. How have you used the last six months or the extra six months that you've had to better prepare for this role?
Ooh, that's another good question. Thank you, Tamsin. So, you know, it's twofold. It's, it's such a unique set of circumstances that COVID threw at us. You know, for me, for me specifically, excuse me, is, you know, I, I closed my business at the end of July because of this pandemic. You know, it's, it's, and I was one of the first people to advocate for closing things down before our county judge did. I spoke at that council meeting that Tuesday before, advocating for us to be closed because of, for, for safety. And then, you know, when we saw lack of leadership at, you know, federal, state and local levels, we're not seeing funding go where it needs to be. We're not seeing enough help to local small businesses. We're not being heard, you know? This is a Band-Aid, right? This to-go model that they gave us as like some gift, you know? We're just, a lot of people couldn't sustain that model for more than a, a, a business quarter, you know, three months. And then it goes to five months, and you're like, I, my business can't keep doing this. So for me, it, it put a really unique fire under my butt, right? Like it really, it really empowers you to say, okay, I've had to change my entire life. Like I thought I would open this business for a very long time. I stopped providing income to employees. You know, that's, that's a lot of hardship to have to go through in a very quick amount of time. All the while trying to balance, how are you going to be able to afford your bills and what you need? And how is everybody else doing in the community? All the while, you know, if you're running for office and if you have a heart of service, you know, you're doing the work. So it's showing up to Green Tree Estates and helping my neighbors get access to clean water by clearing out brush, poison oak, using a trencher to dig holes in the ground to place pipe. You know, it's, it's showing up when asked. It's, it's, you know, doing the work, showing up to the protests for Black Lives Matter. It's, it's doing the sit-ins and listening to the concerns of your neighbors and taking them very seriously. And, and working with, you know, Denton for Diversity to create the Denton's Eight Can't Wait demands that we brought to city council on how to best assess how policing works in our community and how it doesn't. Addressing the need for more money for human services and calling into council on those online meetings every Tuesday, saying, you have to change our budget. We gotta have better protections so that people aren't being evicted. Our utilities aren't being shut off. We have access to food and mental health resources. You know, it's, it's, it's not stopping the work even though we're in this weird flux, right? Because city council still has to do their job. Decisions still have to be made and things will get passed. And if we're not careful, things will get snuck in that we weren't aware of in the middle of a pandemic when we're in crisis that will only further put us in crisis. So I, to answer, I hope that answered your question, but in a long way, like this extra six months has taught me just, just how much we need someone like me on council.
So for our next question, you are running for D1. Are there any votes that have come out of, that the incumbent of D1 has made that you would have done differently, that we would have seen George Ferry do differently on city council?
I think there are, there are many, so I'm gonna try and pick a couple. You know, I think one is how we access information as a city. It's really hard to navigate the city website. We'll all say that, even city council members will say that, you know? But a lot of these, these votes are determined by your interest level in these topics, which city council gets the opportunity to kind of rank where they see things that are important on a scale. And then city, city staff will work from that to kind of bring things up. And that's important to always know. It's, you know, that, for example, my current council member Gerard Huthsbyth saw no interest in having a conversation about the statue on the courthouse, right? Even though his, his father Willie Huthsbyth has been an advocate about having it removed for two decades at least. So it's, it's interesting to see this like dichotomy, right? This, this very just differing in opinions, but he's our representative, right? He's supposed to speak for us. And I, I definitely would have done that differently. I would have made that a priority. I mean, you, you have a D1 resident who spent every Sunday, almost every Sunday of two-plus decades advocating for something. It's, and that's his own father, but that's neither here nor there. I would have voted to have that removed much sooner and been that, made that a priority. You know, when we talk about developers and we talk about tax incentives, when we talked about tax incentives for Tyson Foods, we talk about tax incentives for Bucky's Gas Station, you know? We need to be more mindful that the criteria that surround our tax incentives aren't always favorable for the everyday citizen of Denton. And what I mean by that is when we take into consideration your level of income, you have to averagely pay your workers a certain amount. So this includes your higher-up executives all the way down to your hourly employees, right? So these people down here, the 175 workers are making just over minimum wage, not a livable wage by any means. But because these five people up here make so much money, this, this wage discrepancy creates their ability to still apply for incentives that they really shouldn't be getting because they're not creating quality, high-paying jobs that people can live on. And in fact, forces them to have a second job to make up the income they can't get from their first job. We have to stop this wage disparity, and it can start with city council. We have that power, right? And we should utilize these tax incentives and wield them for good to create and to keep people here because we want people who love Denton to stay in Denton. You know, it's, it's another reason why I would also advocate for more, you know, entrepreneurial programs coming out of the three colleges we have. Stoke Labs just started one with TWU with women's, women-owned businesses. You know, why don't we have more specifically for BIPOC folk? Like, why aren't we seeing Black Indigenous people of color who want to be entrepreneurs out of, out of college be given resources and access to resources that can help them create businesses that then also create jobs in our community? It's seeing more of that and putting our money in more programs that actually come back and, and have a return on investment instead of it giving people tax breaks that then also increase our utility wages, you know, our utility expenses. And I guess the last thing I'll say about where he and I differ is with the current discussion on the NDO, the Non-Discrimination Ordinance, you know? He's made it clear that he understands discrimination, but also in the same breath will show his lack of understanding of what the LGBTQ+ community needs. And it's, and it's that that frustrates me. It's so frustrating to see a council member, someone willing to, to sit down and meet with the very communities they're supposed to support and, and vote for on the behalf of. It's, it's frustrating to see, you know, when council is given, when, when city staff releases, how many times council members put for citizen issues to city staff? That less than 8% of those requests come from your council member when you email them almost weekly. You know, it's, it's frustrating when you continue to voice your opinion as the constituent and you're continued to be shut down by your council, your council member. It's, it's unfortunate.
So you mentioned a few things in there that were ambitious and transformative and kind of long-term goals, right? Now, the way things have shaken out this year, the election that should have been in May, which was still a special election, is pushed back to November. If you're elected, your first term will be for six months before you face an election again, and you'll be having people challenge your record within three months, right? So knowing that you, you have these goals that will take a while, you have to get past that, you know, what is the strangeness of this challenge, you know, within three to six months. How do you rack up notches and accomplishments? You know, how do you envision yourself, you know, kind of putting some things on the board? So that way, you know, you can say, hey, you know what? In the short amount of time, I've gotten these things done. Do you have a strategy or have you thought that out, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And that's something that the people need to also be cognizant of, like D1 and D2, we're only gonna have six months as your councilperson before you're electing somebody either back or someone new. So, you know, it's, for me, it's going out to the communities and talking to the people. It's like my number one goal, and that was something that I spoke about at, on Saturday's forum is, I'll never forget a year and a half ago, oh gosh, almost two years, where Paul Meltzer held a, a meeting in D1 at the MLK Rec Center to discuss future road improvements and also asked us to come with questions or concerns about roads that we, that we had as D1 residents. And one of the things being the quiet zones that are finally kind of coming up and going forward on the railroad track along Mingo, and Mingo's a very unsafe road, which is what I came to talk about. You know, living off Mingo myself with no bike lanes, with no sidewalks. It's very dark, not well-lit, it's so predict, it's so dangerous. People are walking down there all the time anyways. But it was the first time I really felt like a group of people all collectively felt heard, and those meetings don't happen all the time. And that's really kind of an opportunity missed, I feel. You know, you see people like Kili Briggs, who has them almost, I believe, monthly. That's something I want to do. You know, in those six months, if nothing else, you will have gotten an opportunity to sit down and talk with me. And we're gonna go over the issues, and if I don't have the answer, it's going to city staff. It is a formal request from me to get those answers. Because for me, being heard is the most important thing. If you as a constituent don't feel heard, then why would you want to vote for that person again? So that's my main goal, is to make sure every constituent feels heard and that they are being responded to in a timely manner and that their answers, their questions are being answered. And I think another thing is the NDO talks are happening right now. It's actually going up before council tomorrow, the first day of early voting, to, in a work session, to be discussed a little bit further about how that language would look and what model they're gonna go after out of the five cities that currently have it in Texas. And for me, that's huge. And if that goes beyond when the election happens and I am sworn in to carry on that conversation, I will definitely lead that narrative because it directly affects me and my, 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 my community. I think another thing is sadly, the budget's already been passed, which would be, which would have been a conversation we would have had on council had the election happened. So it's difficult to, to be able to really advocate for, for funding in some senses, but definitely pushing spending in places that need to be spent. You know, I'm still massively advocating. We have utility shot-offs happening and eviction, eviction notices are going out. We're still dealing with a pandemic, and we need to be, we need compassionate leadership. And we need leaders who can understand that, okay, well, we're a municipality who has municipal electric. We're the ones putting out the bills. You know, we need to stop faulting people who can barely afford food and, and possibly barely afford rent as well to then have to cop up all this money for utilities when we can continue to push these bills off and give them a, a much-needed break. Or also create funding structures that help people so that their utilities aren't being shut off, that evictions aren't happening, that we're not increasing unhoused and homeless folk in our city. You know, we, we have an obligation and also we have to have compassion for others. We're all struggling, you know? And it's, it's, even though this budget has been approved, I would continue to advocate for shifting funding to nonprofit organizations and other organizations in our community that help people.
Thank you. So my next question, so because we've got a mayoral election and two special elections happening right now, we don't know what council is gonna look like coming up. So how, what is your strategy or how are you going to, no matter which way the election goes in other seats, how would you make sure that you are able to work with others on council to get the needs of your constituents met and to make sure that you're able to, to pass the ordinances and, and the policies that you're looking to pass?
You know, it's, it is, that's a good question. I mean, there's, there are five out of the seven seats are up right now. We have a very, a different, entirely different-looking council will be inevitable. No matter, no matter what it looks like, it will look different. And with that comes its own set of challenges, like you said, working together. I mean, that's super important, especially right now. You know, when we're talking about how is our economy going to come back from a, during post, what's a post-pandemic look like for us? We should be planning that now. That needs to be a conversation happening two months ago, in my opinion. You know, we're, we're just now seeing businesses reopen, all of them officially because of that, the county judge's order, I believe. So how are businesses supposed to bounce, bounce back? What does that look like? What do they need? You know, we, we need to be talking about what communities are most affected right now because of this pandemic? And how can we help them continue to thrive so that they can, A, you know, continue to give back to their community and whatever that looks like, whether it's volunteerism, whether that's actual dollars, you know, helping the sales tax, getting us back, you know, away from this deficit? You know, we have to be conscious about where we can begin saving money. We have to start talking about ways to cut things and budgets that, you know, were, were kind of our, our, our plan, our Plan As, we can go to Plan C and compromise in some places. You know, it's just like on the parks budget, whenever we talk about, you know, when we're going after land or how we can increase this, this, this fee or that thing to make sure that we're not getting the short end of the stick, that we're actually saving money and that we're building up a balance, that we have some kind of reserve. It's, it's making sure that when we work together, that we're talking first and foremost about those most affected. For me, it's, if, if you're currently on city council, I'm sure you're getting hundreds of emails from people who are telling you what they're struggling with right now because we're all struggling. And my hope is that you're, you're, you took this job because you actually care about all of the people you serve. And the hope is that we can work together to pass ordinances that help protect people and not continue to marginalize communities and not continue to, you know, further that gap. You know, we, it's our job to make sure that we steady the ship of Denton through this and come out the other side healthy enough to continue to sustain. You know, it's, it's imperative that we work together. So for me, it's, it's having these open, honest conversations with each other and being clear in our intent and not trying to push forth policies that don't serve anyone or make things more difficult when right now in this time of need, that's the last thing anybody wants. I hope that answered the question.
To the question I was about to ask, you know, and this is a question that we normally ask for people who are running for, we would only ask a person running for an at-large position or her mayor. D1 is arguably the most diverse individual district in Denton. We have, you know, you have the downtown businesses, you have the bars, you have Southeast Denton. You have people living in township too. You have probably the highest concentration of, of affordable housing in D1. You have, you know, a large number of churches. You have Denton Bible Church is in your, is in your district. The mall is in your district. How do you, you know, I think this district, more than any of them that are, that aren't at-large, probably has the biggest demands and the widest, you know, viewpoints among your constituents. How do you, how does George Ferry kind of get to the average voter right now and have them know that you're going to be listening to everybody, representing everybody and not just those that are closest to you?
Yeah, that's a great question. And again, you know, it's, it's, it's ensuring that you're going to all the different communities that exist within D1 and having meaningful conversations. It's, it's taking the initiative to show up to, you know, whether it be retirement homes and fostering conversations over at Fair Oaks, per se, right down the street from me and saying, hey, what are your biggest issues? What are your problems with the city? Like, what, what do you wish could be run, what could be run better? It's going out to township too. I mean, you know, we talk about the most affordable housing in D1, but for, in my opinion and in a lot of people's opinions, it's not very safe. I mean, I live across the street from an apartment complex that got on fire less than a month ago. And that's the second apartment complex to catch on fire in the last two years in D1 from bad wiring and bad management. You know, it's, it's while things are affordable, why aren't they also safe? Why are these mutually exclusive things that we talk about when we talk about housing, especially in D1? You know, when we talk about roads, you go to Southeast Denton, you talk about roads that haven't been touched in four decades. When you, when you talk to communities in Southeast Denton or even all around D1, you know, we talk about how our roads appear to be the poorest in shape. You know, we talk about, you know, developers, there's a lot of development wanting to happen on 288 right now, around the Duchess area specifically. I received two emails last week from developers who are wanting to better understand my position. When we talk about development wanting to come in, the first thing I want to see is what type of housing are you going to provide? And how much is it gonna cost? Is it accessible? Is it safe? Is it addressing a market that's actually a need that we keep asking for constantly? Are, you know, when we talk about housing, why not have an array of different types of housing? Tiny homes, duplexes, townhomes? Let's talk about other ways to give people access to ownership of homes. Maybe they don't want to own your traditional three-bedroom, two-bathroom. You know, let's talk about ways to get people in housing that they not only want to see but can afford. And I digress. It's, it's fostering these conversations throughout D1. It's, it's going all around, you know, we have so many apartment complexes, you know? But it's, it's like you've got your neighborhood associations. It's working with all of these different agencies and stakeholders to make sure that you're accessible to all of them and that you're equitably giving of your time and access to give them what they're asking for.
So in the forum that we just had this past weekend, you mentioned that you are not taking any PAC money. So I wanted to ask where are your donations coming from and why is it important that you're not taking PAC money?
Great question, Tamsin. No, I'm not taking PAC money. And because, and it is because you can use a lot of words and paint it any way you want. PACs are special interest groups. They are a group of individuals who have put money into a basket based around an ideal. Specific to my opponent, it's based around real estate, right? It's based around them wanting to give money to harm renters' rights. They've made it clear that they put money in the backs of politicians' pockets who are anti-trans and anti-queer, anti-minority. You know, these, these organizations are looking to put money into politics to make sure that the very diverse demographic of people in D1 aren't heard. That's why I don't take PAC money because my vote lies with what the people need and what the people want. And the second you take PAC money, you become beholden to other folk. In the last cycle, July 1st to September 24th, they accepted, I believe, 55 donations ranging between, I think, $5 and $100, raising just about three grand. In total, I probably raised about 66,000 to about 6,500 total as of today. And my opponents raised 7,500. I mean, I've raised 1,000 less and half of their funding, half of her funding came from PACs and lawyers and other businesses. I mean, it's, it's important that money not be in politics. I hate that it has to be. I hate that I had to raise $6,500 in a pandemic to run for office. That shouldn't be how politics are. Again, this is playing into that earlier conversation about the game of politics, which is why today I made a statement, like I had a matching donation where someone donated $500 and said, look, get someone else to donate up to $500 and I'll match it for $500. That's an incredible, incredibly generous gift of an individual who lives in D1. And I said, great, okay, um, today's the last day I'm taking donations because I can't, I won't. I won't fall into that game. She's clearly trying to outraise me for whatever reason, and that's fine. I don't need to raise money. I'm gonna stick to the issues. I'm gonna keep speaking my platform. I'm gonna keep speaking policy that I will pass, and I'm gonna keep speaking to the people's needs. That's more important to me than money.
So we talk about speaking to people's needs and some of the things that you touched on. You know, there's a unique transition that sometimes people have to make where they go from being an activist to being, you know, a candidate. And if you're lucky, being the person who actually gets to make decisions about that. One of the, you know, most pivotal topics that's come up over the last, you know, year has been defund police, which, which is shorthand for the idea of, you know, allocating resources that stop emergencies before they become emergencies. It's become a hot topic though, because lots of people like to distort the meaning and semantically it can be confusing. If you're elected to city council, you'll be in a position to actually start pushing for reforms and, and working together with officials to do, to do that. What are the challenges to how you're going to praise things? How you're going to put things out? How are you gonna get ideas from, from staff, you know, now that you would have that opportunity to really make transformative change?
Yeah, that's a great question. First and foremost, again, like with the budget already being approved, it's gonna be difficult as far as how that will shift and change first. But second is, you know, when we're talking about what Denton has been addressing, out of the protests and the sit-ins and the conversations came an organization, which was Denton for Diversity, led by some, some of the leaders of these protests, community activists, folks from different school organizations at UNT and TWU. And I had the honor to be asked just to sit and listen as, as a, as an activist myself, but to sit and listen and to answer questions about city budget. If they had any city questions, they asked me to be that person. So I was, I was that person, and I was proud to be that person and sit and to help kind of craft the Denton's Eight Can't Wait is a call to say, look, it's not about saying abolish all police. We're saying, hey, in the budget right now, they're asking for 1.6 million more dollars. They already have a $32 million budget. They already have a 62 million, $37 million budget, excuse me, a $62 million bond package coming forth to build a- a sixty-two million dollar bond package coming forth to build a second substation, to build a firing range. All these things are already in the works for the police. We're asking to advocate more money to human services. You know, it's, it's, it's breaking down the semantics and getting the the, the, the chance out of the city council room to, to really break down what is it that's being asked? When the use of force committee was put forward, I mean, they didn't even have a majority decision on how they wanted to move forward because a lot of them felt like this was made in bad faith. And this is people in the community who are asked to address these issues. They felt they weren't being taken seriously. They felt that there was too much involvement with police and outside forces to kind of sway opinions. So when we talk about that, we have to understand, is this equitable? Every question about what policies, procedures and programs we implement should come from a, from a question of equity. Is everyone being given the same exact opportunity? Is this information being presented open and honestly to this group? You know, with the, with the police um oversight committee, that's going to take effect at the beginning of the year in January. And they've been discussing it with council as of last week still. What that would look like. A lot of people are, are concerned because there's not enough teeth, right? There's not enough uh, behind it that can give them enough uh enforcement to feel like we as a community have a say in how our police work in our community. These public servants, police are public servants, you know? They adhere to the chapter one forty-three code or one thirty-four code. That was a question we got at the, the police firefighter forum. Where, you know, I said, again, I come from a place of equity. I will always ask, if this system does not serve everyone, it has failed everyone. If you fail one person, you have failed everybody. You have to sit back down at the table. You have to be okay with uncomfortable conversations about how things have failed and how complicit you've been in those. Own your mistakes and then we have to work together to build better systems. And we do that by including more people in the conversation. Those directly involved and the most vulnerable of this, these communities to whatever subject we're talking about. When it comes to police, we're talking about black folk, specifically people of color. You know, we're talking about involving them in conversations that are going to be difficult but must be had if we wish to move forward and show that our community as a whole matters.
We're gonna start wrapping this up. So George, if you can give us, um, we're gonna give you a few minutes, if you can give us a short closing pitch on why people should vote for you, why people in D one should vote for you, why you are the best choice to be D one's next city councilperson?
Sure. Um, I got in this race again, because I felt like my representative wasn't only not listening to me, but my neighbors and other communities in D one. I understand how hard it is to run for council and how it's not meant to be for folk like me. It's hard for renters and people with the, with the regular nine to fives or people who are living paycheck to paycheck to take off every Tuesday, to take off the first Monday. It's made difficult for us, but we deserve a seat at the table. Which is why I threw my hat and the ring. You know, since then, a lot has changed for me. My, my business has closed and circumstances have changed a little bit as to how I'm going to continue to make money, but that doesn't change the fact that I care about what I'm doing and the communities I wish to serve. At the end of the day, it's, I believe with more perspective on council, we can begin to have more compassionate leadership to change policies, to create more safe and affordable housing that really is both safe and affordable. I know, I believe that we can, we can pass a comprehensive N D O to ensure that our LGBTQ plus siblings have equal rights. You know, the Supreme Court just ruled on that in, you know, uh, uh, unemployment in June. You know, um, I, I'm running because I care. I'm running because I enjoy and truly love doing the work. I love being of service and I act, I, I, I answer the call whenever, whenever asked. And I think that that is shown in the work I've done for the last name a number of years. And I, at the very end of the day, you know, I'm not here to take a bunch of money or to get in the pockets of people I don't care, that don't live here that I have no interest in dealing with. I'm here to work for you and I'd like you to put me to work. Thanks.
Excellent. Thanks a lot, George. Um, real quick, I'm gonna do a recap for everyone. Um, the election is on November third. Early voting starts October thirteenth. We are in a very special year right now. We have municipal elections on the ballot in November, which means that they're gonna be at the very bottom. And most importantly, these races are not going to have an R next to them. They're not gonna have a D next to them, anything like that. Uh, basically, it means that you're gonna have to know a little bit more about who's running to make the best decision for you. If you're watching this right now, chances are you're doing your homework. Make sure your friends know what you know and you pass this information on. Uh, because these elections are crucial. And um, you know, the fact of the matter is, in these elections right now, because they've never been done before, we're gonna have a lot of people missing these races. And we're also gonna have a lot of uninformed people, you know, voting in them that normally wouldn't. So uh, once again, whatever you know, whatever you feel, whatever George has said that, you know, speaks to you, um, pass that on, share it. Uh, once again, November third is the election. George Ferry, running for city council, D one. Um, thanks for joining us. My name's Matt Caneta. Tamsin Price is with us. Um, once again, you're here because Denton matters. We're here for you because Denton matters. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.